Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Independent City Council meeting. It's Tuesday, October 8th, 6:30 in the evening. The sun is setting. It's cool. It's fall. Welcome. Let the record show the council members are all here and happy and recovering from the ghost walk. And glad to see everybody. Folks, you have minutes of the September 24th meeting in your packet. Do they meet with your okidoki? I take that nod as a motion.
Yes.
And there's a second from Mayor Mark.
Or you're gonna get in trouble with Karen.
Never make your city recorder mad. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, motion carries. Thank you very much. We have several people who'd like to make some brief comments this evening. I'm gonna invite to the podium our school superintendent, Jennifer Kubista. Good evening and welcome. I told you you'd be right on.
Good evening. I like that.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor, and to the City Council, as well as our Independence staff and community. I'm here today to just share some information about our continued community chats. We are back out this fall. This past spring, I did nineteen chats with our community and another seven with our school district staff to really get an understanding of what we need to focus on from a strategic plan process. Some of the people in this room were part of those presentations, and I'm very thankful for that. I spent the summer now taking all that data and starting to put it into a plan. So I'm gonna leave you a couple flyers, because we do have a few more of those meetings to go over and review. This first one coming up next is October 10th, this Thursday, from 6:00 to 7:30 at Ash Creek. We also have one October 16th, again, same time, 6:00 PM to 7:30 at Central High School. And then our last one, October 23rd, again, 6:00 PM to 7:30 at Henry Hill. So we invite all of the council, the mayor, any staff members that want to be a part, or anyone from Independence to community, to please come and join and give us some final feedback as we put our final plans in place. So I'm gonna leave you a couple of flyers here for anyone that would like them. So thank you for the time, and good to see you all.
Thank you. Really appreciate you taking the time, and we really appreciate your efforts on behalf of our community on so many fronts. I know you're involved in a lot of different things, so on behalf of all of us, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Vicki McCubbin, you get to be next. Good evening and welcome.
Thank you, Mayor, councilors, city staff. I am just gonna make a brief comment about the 7.2 proposed museum move. And as longstanding member of this society and chair of the advisory council, I hope that you will accept this. I was out on the corner of the proposed location, being a ghost host, and there were people in the community who brought it up and asked if it was happening. And I said, "Well, you know, we're all just waiting to see," but there was a lot of support for it, for people in the community. So I know it's a big decision, but I hope you'll rule in favor of it.
Thank you very much. I do appreciate you taking the time to come in and appreciate your efforts. Jasper Smith, good evening. Welcome.
I'm here this evening to offer support for completing the purchase of a new building for the museum as well. And I was here early in the process to outline some of the need to move the museum, and I'm not gonna restate any of that today, around the accessibility and kind of vibrant historic downtown. Instead, I just wanted to thank the city and the City Council for exploring this option, doing your due diligence in a thoughtful and planful process, and for listening and responding to the community's concerns around this. And I will not restate the previous points, because I appreciate that you have listened to the community and have restated them yourselves in the proposal that you made. Though I would like to add the encouragement for support, in that as part of the 2040 Steering Committee, I've had the opportunity to hear some of the emerging values and themes that the community has brought up. And residents have spoken of iron downtown, honoring our history, being inclusive of everyone in the community, having cultural and multicultural gathering places, hosting events for locals and for visitors, and most of all, for being a can-do city that responds to these solutions and does this type of thing. So you have the opportunity today to make a decision that will make us proud as a community and move us forward to our goals and visions of the future. And we have the support of excellent staff and management at the museum. We have an engaged and active board, and a supportive welcoming community, and I hope the City Council will unanimously support this step forward for our community. And thank you for your attention and efforts.
Thank you for taking the time to come in and visit with us this evening. Thanks so much. I'm gonna keep us moving forward. I have several things to make mention. We have had a resignation on the Planning Commission. Esmeralda is gonna be taking classes in the evening, and so we have a vacancy on the Planning Commission. And so there are several people who've already put in applications, and I know that others may wish to. The applications are online. The form is online. Person could fill it out and get it in. And so I'll be taking a look at that in the coming weeks. Just wanna let everybody, you know, we had the LOC meeting in Bend. Sorry, it just all kind of activities.
Runs together.
Yeah, it does run together. There were lots of really wonderful meetings, lots of very positive support for Independence. I made a presentation on behalf, I'm the president of the LOC Foundation, so I had a chance to make a presentation to the 500-plus. There's some really interesting kinds of things that I think you'll see from staff and myself, some other issues coming forward. We also had Regional Solutions here a couple of weeks ago. That's the group appointed by the governor to work on economic efforts in the region. They've been very helpful in our projects along the river and other places. On one of the gubernatorial appointments, Jody Christiansen, our local staff person from the governor's office, they decided to hold the meeting here in the event center. And then people got a nice tour of the projects. Representative Ron Noble, who is the convener, was very impressed with what he saw here, what the examples of what we're doing here that can be used. And finally, last Friday, State Treasurer Tobias Reed came to town, and we talked economic development. He got a wonderful tour of everything, and again, was very complimentary to all the folks that are involved in making the wonderful things happening in our downtown. He walked around. He spent an hour and a half here and wants to come back and bring others with him, and so that was really positive. I'm gonna turn to our city manager and let him put his report out. He's got a few things to share with us this evening. Good evening.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council. I do have some things to report tonight, so I'll take a few minutes. One thing that just came in is we received an appeal on the Brandy Meadows subdivision today. With the noticing requirements by the state, we're probably looking at bringing that to council on November 12th for a decision. I'll just remind everyone, since that is a quasi-judicial decision, you shouldn't be talking to people about it. Or if you do, you need to make sure that you disclose that as ex parte contact at the meeting when that happens. So just found out about that late this afternoon, but I wanted to give you a heads-up. Also wanted to announce that on October 15th, at 5:30 Central High School, Vision 2040 Town Hall, we are extremely excited to kind of move into the next steps and process of that project, and really excited to get that finished. But that's an important meeting, and we really want great participation in that meeting, as many people as possibly can. And to encourage that, there will be food. When I hear it's tacos from Los Primos, so.
Date and time again?
October 15th, 5:30 Central High School. So yes, please come, and invite everybody you know. So a number of things today. First off, just more for your information. I did receive in the mail an offer to remove the city from the national class lawsuit for opioid settlement. So essentially, I think everybody's probably heard by this point that there is some fairly significant lawsuits out there and some significant awards in the billions of dollars on some national class action lawsuits. And part of that process is to give everybody the opportunity to pull out of the class action lawsuit, which every local government essentially in the country is a part of, if they want to pursue action on their own. That really wouldn't make much sense for us, as it's being a small local jurisdiction and trying to pull out of something that's already done. And the state of Oregon is also pursuing claims against this, which haven't been resolved yet. And those claims, they may or may not share the settlement money with cities and local governments. But I talked to our city attorney about this, and she was kind of echoing the same thoughts that I had, is we still haven't given our right to pull out later. If we want, we can pretty much pull out all the way up till the end, even though that's not what the letter says. That's the reality. And it really doesn't make so much sense that we did. But I wanted to give you guys kind of an update on that, let you know that that was something that was out there. We had a question quite a while ago, actually, about Roundup, whether the city used Roundup and kind of how we use Roundup. And so I've talked with the Public Works Department, and we do have one licensed employee who's licensed by the state, which is an applications license, to apply herbicides in general, including Roundup. And so we typically will spot-spray that. We have a back-back sprayer for that, and they will go and spot-spray individual plants. And we also have contracts with commercial spray contractors. They are likewise licensed to use herbicides and use it in a proper manner. And so, you know, I guess the answer to the question is, yes, we do use Roundup. We also use other herbicides, but we try to use them in a very responsible way. And, you know, I think the question also came up about, you know, whether or not we could regulate Roundup in the city. Certainly, we could regulate the sale of Roundup in the city. We could certainly put rules in place as to how the city applied Roundup, even though we currently follow all the state federal rules. However, if we were trying to regulate it on public property or private citizens using Roundup, that would probably be fairly challenging, is kind of what I'm hearing. So I'm happy to follow up more on that with our legal counsel, if you guys are interested in doing that. But at this point, I will wait for your guys' direction on that. Also, we had at the last meeting some conversation about our tree trimming program, and so I do have more information about that. So essentially, we do a quarter of the city every year, and basically are working on a safety program to create a free space, free of trees or tree canopies over the roads. We typically do this right before school starts, because the school buses tend to have, you know, a fair number of issues with the growth that goes on during the year. And we also work on sidewalks, so if there's a significant amount of vegetation over the sidewalk, we take care of that. I've heard some comments related to that, about some people would prefer to have a notice beforehand so that they could go out and do something themselves, if they understood what they needed to accomplish. There are some residents that would be happy to go out and do that work. I would gather that not many residents in the town would take it. This is actually a pretty good program that we provide through the city and through contractors in order to do that. But I think there is some benefit to those who may want to do it themselves, because they have a particular tree that they want to protect in a particular way, and they have the capability and the desire to do it to themselves. So we're talking about, you know, potentially, before we do the program, maybe a month before we do it, putting out something informational for them to know what they would need to do if they wanted to do that themselves, and then let them know if they don't accomplish it by date, then the city will be coming through and doing that for them. That'll probably take a little bit of time, so we may end up working with a nonprofit as something to hand that out, because 25% of the city is quite a few households. We would probably want to do a physical notice on their door or something so that they can get it. We can't really, we don't really have a list of everybody's address, or who to send it to, or everybody else, and sometimes we have tenants and owners. And so probably the best way is just to put a flyer on the door to make sure that they have that. Specifically, I did look at the property on 6th and E Street, and I'm not certain which tree was concerned. My guess is there was an evergreen tree there that was cut up fairly significantly on the sides. Certainly, there was a lot of stuff removed, but from my rough, you know, calculation, there's still a lot left there, and I don't know that that's gonna overall be a problem. But we're gonna have Public Works go out, talk to the individual, make sure we know which tree it was, what their concerns were, make sure that we hear what they have to say, and then consider what they might have to offer to that conversation to see if we can do things better. So Polk Street Lots. So we were looking and doing some due diligence, and we had some encouragement from Council Rans from Smith to redouble our efforts to make sure that when we purchase that property, that there weren't any conditions, you know, relative to the sale of that property. And we had already looked at the deed, which is the legal document that we need to abide by. But as we looked further, we found an agreement between Boise Cascade and the City of Independence was signed by city manager Greg Ellis at the time, so this was in 2008. And that agreement had a notice in it that said, I'm gonna read it to you. "The city acknowledges that Boise has advised the city of the presence of shallow-buried utilities, water, and sewer under this property that render it unsuitable for future residential or commercial construction. Parties have agreed that the property shall be used as a park or other open or green space." So certainly, that was unknown. In 2010, the interim city manager, Ross Schultz, put the property up for sale. That transaction never went through. I think from that point forward, everybody assumed that it was available to be sold. And I certainly, I did talk to David Klein, and he had no idea that this was there, and it would have changed, he would have done things differently if he had. And I haven't had a chance to talk to Greg Ellis. I did reach out to him, but he's in Europe right now, and so he said that every minute he talks to the phone costs money, so I'm gonna have to wait till he gets back, which is fair. So anyway, I think, you know, that's definitely new information to add to the conversation. It was pretty straightforward. This was signed by Greg. It was signed by Boise Cascade. And, you know, if you ask me, an agreement is an agreement. So you could do a number of things. I mean, we could still continue to move forward, or we could consider extinguishing the resolution that you guys passed before to sell that property. And so I would be looking for guidance from you guys to move forward, so.
If I may, city manager and I had a chance to visit about this, because I recalled a number of different conversations, and I hadn't seen the document, but it's pretty clear. And unless there's objection, what I was gonna suggest is they bring forth a, because we need an official resolution, or can we just do that?
You could make a motion. I would probably make a motion for me to bring back a resolution to extinguish that resolution, so it's official and in the record.
Would there be any objection to having staff bring back a resolution to undo the resolution?
No.
Is everybody okay?
Yes.
Can we do that in the appropriate role of, as it rolls forward?
I will bring back. I don't think you need to make a formal motion there.
Right.
And that's fine.
Thank you.
And I would also suggest that we also bring back a separate resolution that designates this as park and open space. It would be easy for this mistake to get made again some down the time the road, if we actually have something in the record that's on the council side of things. That would be much easier to find than an agreement from 2008, which was buried somewhere. And I just don't want there to be any confusion about this.
Then we could put that in, then it'd be part of the Parks Master Plan and everything like that.
Yeah, of course.
We would roll it in.
If it's set aside for parks, certainly roll into that, and, you know, there are some opportunities there. I mean, that might be a great place for a picnic structure or something.
Everybody sound okay with that? Okay, please do.
Okay. Great. Well, thank you. I appreciate that.
I just wanted to say thank you. I appreciate the effort in looking into all of it.
Yeah, no, my pleasure, and we were moving pretty quickly. We all, we would have done this due diligence before we put it up for sale. And just so you know, I didn't even contact a broker or anything. I didn't get to that point, because, you know, we need to dot our i's and cross our t's, and so we weren't on a bad path. This doesn't interrupt anything that we've been working on. So GFOA award. So I am happy to state that we have, again, thanks to Gloria and a number of other people's work, received the GFOA Comprehensive Annual Financial Report Award for the fiscal year ending 2018. It's a certificate of achievement for excellence in financial reporting. The certificate of achievement is the highest form of recognition in governmental accounting and financial reporting, and its attainment represents a significant accomplishment by government with its management. And this is real. I mean, this is a real award. It recognizes a ton of work. We all see the budget, and you see what goes into the presentation of the budget, putting that all together. And this is actually a separate financial document that only financial people understand. And honestly, they love the document, because they understand it. But it's extraordinarily complicated. It's extraordinarily challenging to put together. You have to tie everything in your budget, every transaction in your general ledger, into a government-specified format that meets all the different GASP requirements and everything else. And Gloria does an amazing job of putting that together. This award is actually much harder to win than the GFOA Budget Award, and not very many cities actually achieve this award, especially on an annual basis. So kudos to Gloria and her team. And I think, you know, this just shows once again, this city's, you know, very well from a financial perspective, and her efforts are greatly appreciated.
So Gloria, on behalf of myself, the council, and all of our community, thank you very much for your professionalism. I know how hard this award is. I've talked to other finance people, and this is a big deal. And so congratulations and thank you from all of us.
Couple more things. Lot 7, Independence Landing. That is the lot that is just across the driveway from where Osprey Point is going in, and so kind of across from the hotel there. A lot of, part of that lot was turned into a parking lot, along with part of the Elks Lodge lot and a bunch of other buildings there kind of contributed to, some property to put that parking lot in. But there's still about 10,000 square feet that's kind of, you know, identified by the curb that surrounds that lot. And since we have had such great success with the hotel, Osprey Point is moving forward really well. They're doing some geotechnical work right now to figure out how they can put the piers in properly, and once they get that resolved, I'm here to see a fair amount, a lot of work actually happening on that side as well, which means there's really nothing left in Independence Landing with the apartments and the townhomes going in across from this. So now seems to be the right time. We've talked about this before. You've authorized me to go ahead and put that up for sale. I'm just kind of announcing today that we have put together an RFP. We put it on our website. We put it on social media. The next thing we're gonna do is we're gonna send it out to commercial brokers, and we're hopeful that we get some great responses to that. And it's actually a great place to be. It's gonna kind of be in the heart of everything there. I think our thoughts are something a little less dense than everything that's around it, just so there can still be kind of some open space, but we'll have to see what we get back for proposals on that. So I'm excited to see that out. Got a notice from Minnet today about a service, which I know they've been working really hard on, and it is relative to Lifeline Services. So this is an opportunity for people who meet the criteria to get Lifeline Service, which is a cooperation with, I believe, the federal government, and certainly Minnet has done a good job with this. So essentially, I'm just gonna read it to you. "Minnet Willamette Valley Fiber Serving Bond with Independence in Dallas has been approved by the Oregon Public Utilities Commission as a provider of Lifeline Service to its qualified subscribers. Motivated by the desire to serve all residents regardless of income or financial condition, Minnet Willamette Fiber sought to use its approval. This is an incredible value offer, as John Craig, PUC's manager of the Lifeline Program. With PUC subsidies, Minnet Willamette Fiber's $10 safety line could cost qualified subscribers Or Minnet's Willamette Valley Fiber Lifeline Data Package of 30 megabytes per second download, 50 megabytes per second upload would have a net cost to subscribers of $3.86 a month." So after January 1st, 2020 data subsidies are rising, and the net cost for the Lifeline package will drop to just $1.86. So if you qualify for this, and you can get 30 megabytes per second of download speed for $1.86, I don't think you're gonna find a way to beat that deal. It's essentially free, you know, very, very, very low cost.
And that's for qualifying people?
That's for qualifying people. There are a number of different ways to qualify, depending on different situations. It is meant for people who are, you know, financially need assistance. I think one of the criteria, that's just the general criteria, is if you're at one, at no more than 135% of the poverty requirement that the federal government sets. So you can certainly go up online. It took me half a second to Google it and find the information that I needed to see whether I qualified. But this is a great offering, and it's a great opportunity for the community, for people who need service and are struggling to pay for it, so.
Great. Thank you.
Finally, you mentioned that we have a fillable PDF form for boards and commissions online, and that is true for the Planning Commission. This is kind of still a work in progress, so it is online and it is fillable, but there's a number of things that we're probably gonna be working on. For example, it doesn't save the information that you put in there, so if you put it down and your browser refreshes, you're gonna lose everything. You also can't save it. There's ways to do that, but it takes a little bit to get that working properly. We also want to have the ability to electronically sign it, so that you don't have to print it out, sign it, scan it, create it to a PDF. My daughter's about college age, so trust me, I've gotten really good at that, but it is annoying. And then upload it to our website. So we have some more things to fix there, and we will. We chose to not go to a straight, you know, online forum system, mostly because my experiences and other people's experiences with those is you can get them set up, they work great, and then the web provider comes up with an update, and it breaks the whole thing, and you lose all the data behind it, and it's just a nightmare to maintain those type of systems. So we'll fix this, and we'll get it so that it's convenient for people to do. But for now, probably best to pull the form up, type your information, print it really quick, and then sign it and scan it and get it back to you. So if you want it to look professional, or you could just print it and do it out by hand and get it back to you. So I think that is my list of items for tonight, but I'm certainly available for questions or comments.
I have some.
Please.
Regarding Roundup, I'd really like to see an alternative to Roundup by the city. I think you're right. I think it's unreasonable to expect residents to follow a particular decree regarding that. I mean, there'd be no way to enforce that. But I'd be interested in what other councilors have to say about Roundup. Also regarding the tree trimming situation, I'm not sure a notice on a person's house is necessary. I think maybe something on the Independence City website, something on the Facebook page to let people know. I think, I appreciate Public Works going out and talking to this particular resident who at least confirmed to Councilor Martin Willis and I that he takes care of his trees. And so he's very concerned about whether or not his trees are gonna survive the last trimming. I'm not an arborist. I don't know what that actually means, but I hope that's not the case. Also regarding the Polk Street properties, when we passed that resolution, one of the things we said in that resolution, that it would be used, the sale of it would be used to offset any other land acquisition or building purchases. So I think it's important to let community residents know that's no longer something we can do.
Yes, that was the hope, and you're correct. Without the revenue from that, we wouldn't be able to do that, so. Without the revenue from that, we wouldn't be able to do that, so that is correct.
And thank you for the fillable form. I think that's a good start, and I look forward to seeing an improvement.
The Independence Targeted Industry Analysis.
Mayor and council, I was here a couple of months ago talking about this, and then we unfortunately had the wrong, we had the slide deck in your agenda packet instead of the actual targeted industry analysis. So, I am back with the actual targeted industry analysis. It's been a couple of months, so I give you a quick refresher. This was really a, was a grant-funded project to look at the industrial areas around the airport, identify what types of uses would be, can best, you know, best be able to take advantage of both location in Independence with our, you know, kind of regional opportunities, and then also ideally identify some industries that might benefit from proximity to the airport. And then the other piece was to look at what, if any, development barriers there are for the various properties and just kind of outline a potential path forward for addressing those barriers. You probably, you know, saw it here. I think we've got pretty good results as far as, you know, kind of a list of potential industries that, you know, if we were to do a recruitment campaign, at the very least, you know, I'm going to be kind of researching a few more of those industries in a little more depth in case one comes along that I can really kind of be able to speak to them about what their needs are and kind of how we fit those needs. And then the other piece was, I think, you know, the, the property that was of most interest was to the west of the airport with the potential through-the-fence access, and it just kind of identified that really kind of the number one question of that property is the, the potential presence of wetlands. And so, it kind of outlines a variety of paths forward if the city wanted to help essentially answer some of those questions and help that property become a little more, a little bit more development-ready. So, with that, I'd be happy to answer questions if you have any.
Questions for Mr. Irvine?
Yeah, just actually some statements. I was glad to see that there's a representative from the Oregon Department of Land Conservation Development on the board. That was, that was reassuring for me because, you know, I've been complaining about wetland mitigation versus wetland preservation. So, I did see some references to wetland preservation in the documents. That's good. So, I also look forward to seeing the wetlands inventory. That'll be interesting.
Please.
And I wanted to thank the city staff for being so considerate of my questions that I'd sent back and forth about making sure that the entire city was, was advised about this, and people who had had concerns about it had had direct contact. So, thank you very much for, for taking care of that.
Just some questions. If not, this is an action item, please.
I move to approve Resolution 19-1513, adopting the Independence Targeted Industry Analysis.
Second.
Motion seconds or further discussion? Everybody okay? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed. Motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Next one is public hearing on Development Code Amendment for regarding accessory dwellings. And Karen, do I read the script first before staff report? Is that correct?
I believe so.
Okay. Yes. Okay. This evening, we have a public hearing on Legislative Amendment 2019-3 to consider amendments to Independence Development Code. This amendment would allow accessory structures up to 15 feet tall for a single-story building. The city council will make a final decision based on the complete record, including the testimony received at tonight's public hearing. These proceedings will be recorded. This hearing will be held in accordance with the land use procedures required by the city and the state of Oregon. This is a Type IV legislative procedure. At the beginning of the public hearing tonight, staff shall identify the applicable substantive criteria from the city's comprehensive plan and/or state of Oregon statewide comprehensive, statewide planning goals. Anyone wishing to speak, we are asking you to use the speaker's card that are provided when you get called upon to speak. Please be recognized and state your name and address for the record. Before we begin, does any councillor wish to declare an actual or potential conflict of interest in this matter? I see nobody making any motion, anything. Okay, I'm now going to open the hearing for Legislative Amendment 2019-03. We get to do the staff report. Sir?
Perfect. Thank you very much. Hi, Fred E. Vander with the Planning Department here at the city of Independence. What this is, is a very, very, very small code change. It's basically trying to address something that's sort of an anomaly within the code. Currently, accessory structures, things like garages, that aren't attached to the house, so if they're separated from the house, they have to be either, they have to be less than the height of the, the main structure of the, on the lot. That's the primary structure, what we call it in planner jargon. The, the primary structure has to be bigger than the accessory structure, right? That's sort of what the thinking goes. Well, that works great, except when you've got a really short primary structure. And that's the instance, we have somebody in town was wanting to build a garage and kept on saying, well, my primaries, the garage that I want to build is going to be bigger than my primary structure, partially because my primary structure is so short. And so, basically, what the planning commission looked at that, they considered it, what they came up with, looking around and seeing what other communities are doing, is just essentially saying, you can have a 15-foot-tall accessory structure on a lot, even if that means your accessory structure is going to be taller than the primary building. Essentially, that's what the code change is. It's very, very minor code change. It is in your packet. You can see it there on the proposed code change language. You can just see, it says, "For a single-story building, covered accessory structures shall be limited to a height equal to or less than 15 feet." So, that's, that's essentially it. Nothing too significant. The planning commission did have, they considered that at maybe a couple of meetings. They held a public hearing on it. They, they approved it unanimously and recommended that you folks also, they recommended that you folks approve it.
Any, any questions? Any questions for staff at this point? Please do.
Just, just for my own edification, how does this work in the airpark? Aren't some of those hangars bigger than the, out the houses?
Yeah, so the airpark is, it's a little different. So, the, the airpark is what, so the underlying zoning is low-density residential, but it's got an overlay zone on top of it. The overlay zone on top of it says "airpark development," and it defines airpark development as accessory structures and, and single-family structures to accommodate things like, like aircraft in it. And so, because of that, it has a taller accessory structure limit.
Thank you.
Still questions? Okay. I have, I'm reading from a script because that's, is there anybody out there who is interested, wants to make a comment about this proposal for Oregon? So, I don't see anybody going to the microphone. Okay, without that, I'm going to, and without objections, I'm going to close the public hearing. Okay? Our public hearing is now closed. Council members, what would you like to do with this? There are recommendations and options there.
I move to approve Legislative Amendment LA 2019-03, as submitted, and direct staff to prepare an ordinance to approve of the changes.
Second. I have a motion, a second. Discussion, everybody okay? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed. Motion carries. Thank you very much. Okay. Mr. Pesamir and Ms. Butch.
All right, well, I am going to do a presentation. I'm going to have Gloria kind of talk a little bit about financials, and I'll probably kind of wrap things up. So, just for your information, you have a council action memo in your packet. I wrote this council action memo really to council. When I wrote this, I was kind of considering council as being my audience, and so I knew that you had a lot of the background information, so I abbreviated some of the conversation, especially that happened in the past and some of the other items. And councillor Cor, you know, pointed that out to me, and I appreciate that because, you know, the reality is, is sometimes we have multiple audiences, and this is an important decision. It's good that the citizens, you know, have a little bit more background about what we're doing. So, I'm going to actually kind of do an expanded presentation and kind of link this back to maybe some of the goals that the city has and the museum has, so that there can kind of be some more, more meat to kind of what I, what I said in my report. So, first off, I'm going to kind of go back and, well, before I start, I just want to, you know, say one thing. There's been a ton of work that's gone into this over the years that preceded my time. And I don't pretend that I understand all of the hard work that went into kind of some of the considerations and thought processes about what museums' strategic plan was going to be and how things were going to move forward. So, I just want to point out that there has been a ton of thought that has gone into this at every different level, and I'm kind of coming in this late to the game. So, some of this, if I, if I get something that's not quite correct, please correct me. So, this is in the City of Independence Strategic Plan. So, this is the city's strategic plan, which is adopted in 2017. There are a couple of items that are pointed out there, and goal number two, for example, is, goal number two says, "Sustain public services and assets, including streets, buildings, technologies, utilities, public safety, parks, museum, and libraries to high standards in conditions, appearance, and function." I, I think it's, it lists museums right there, and, you know, I think there's no secret that the museum is struggling to meet that goal. Currently, the function of the building is compromised by the various vertical levels in the building. Access is difficult or impossible in some places for mobility, mobility-challenged residents, and the space has not lended itself well to presenting historical items in many areas. The bathrooms are in the basement. They're not accessible. There has been some discussion of adding addition onto the back of the building, and while that addition would be beneficial for a lot of reasons, the cost of doing that would probably be greater than the building that we're considering tonight, and it would not resolve any of the other issues related to ADA access or to the other vertical challenges that we're, we're facing in the building. So, so that is certainly problematic. Goal four of the City of Independence Strategic Plan states that the city will explore barriers to participation in city government and services by all members of the community. Further efforts to improve access and participation in city boards, commissions, activities, and services by people of all demographics. In summary, foster an environment of inclusion, diversity, and equity through the active engagement by the City of Independence. We've talked about it before. It's been talked about many times. It's the museum blocks ADA access. Providing that ADA access is really going to be cost prohibitive. It would also be an extreme challenge to meet the historic district standards that that would be. Any access to go up to the main level is going to have to wrap around the building and look horrible. The only other option would be to put an elevator in, which is really cost prohibitive, as well as going to take up even more museum space. It would have to stop on multiple levels, and it would, it would definitely be a challenge. So, really, the, the way, the condition of the building and to solve it prevents inclusion of a portion of our population, and is truly a direct contradiction of the goal that's outlined there. There are also some goals in the Independence Heritage Museum Strategic Plan. So, the strategic plan was, is for July 18, 19 is kind of their current plan that they have. And it is really kind of based on the City of Independence' strategic plan, and then kind of gets more into detail about how the museum operation is going with that. So, goal number six is partner with historical and cultural organizations to create, share exhibits. The objective A of that goal is to partner with Oregon Black pioneers. I'm going to get this wrong. Chachalu?
Chachalu.
Chachalu Museum, Oregon Jewish Museum, and other organizations. So, while museum staff and board members support several partnerships and have posted a variety of traveling exhibits, they have either been held offsite at the civic center or more recently at the current facility, with the understanding that many potential visitors would be unable to view the exhibits because they cannot navigate the stairs. The new site would allow for much improved access to both eternal and traveling exhibits, as well as to presentations highlighting those exhibits. The new site would be able to hold museum-related events that cannot currently be held at the existing site. And I think that's, you know, pretty obvious. If you take a building that's kind of broken up into different pieces, and your floor area is in different pieces, and you put that all onto one level, you can be much more efficient with that space, and even having the same exhibit space, you can have some open space, which then you can invite community events into. And when Carly was here, making her presentation about, you know, kind of what the museum's plans were, it's, it's clear that if the museum wants to move forward, they need to be inclusive, not only with these organizations, but a lot of other organizations, and provide that space for people to come in and feel like it's an event space for them, where they can actually talk about things, share things, and be in a space that's comfortable. And I, I believe this new facility would be able to do that with, with ease. Goal number two of the museum strategic plan is, I think directly gets to this, goal number two is provide access and ensure safety for all community members and employees. Item 2A is identify potential new sites that are ADA compliant. And 2B is identify potential funding for relocations and renovations. So, with that in mind, I think that was really building on, on everything, and that item, I think, is kind of primarily one of the reasons this conversation got kicked off, which was, you know, kind of started by the museum board and the, and so, on July 23rd, 2019, council passed a motion for the city manager to make efforts to identify properties and make reasonable offers to purchase property to relocate the existing museum, and the final offers are subject to council approval. And that's what we're here to talk about tonight. We've gone through this whole process. This is back to you for council approval. You've heard this before, so you kind of know the issues, and we're really at that point for just that final approval. Council also passed a companion motion to direct the city staff to identify grants and other revenue sources to help defray any projected purchase, renovation, and relocation costs. After that action, I went out and commissioned a survey of properties that would be suitable for a museum that are available now or may be available in the foreseeable future, kind of based on the criteria that we, we know that we need. And the conclusion of that survey was that the property at 281 Second Street was the best available site that will likely become available. And I'll just add, it wasn't even close. I mean, if, just based on cost alone, there wasn't anything that would, would be close to, to what we would need. And then all the sizes were wrong. They were multiple stories, or they were way too big or way too small. When you take a look at, you know, what this building is, I think if you'd asked, you know, before this building came available, what were the criteria that you would want to see in a building, it would have been exactly what, what we're talking about here in 281 Second Street. So, so 281 Second Street is a 6,575-square-foot building. Currently, they're in about a 5,500-square-foot building, I think, on multiple levels. It has a good ceiling height for a museum. It's one-story, and really importantly, it's in the core of downtown. And when you listen to Carly's presentation, all of what she was really talking about is how we draw the museum into part of downtown. How do we get it to be relevant to everything that's going on so that we can talk about not only the history of Independence, but how that history relates to the present and the future of what's going on in Independence? So, I think there's a great vision there. The site will require a little renovation. The bathrooms are not currently ADA compliant, but modifications will not be difficult. And as I said before, the site seems ideal to allow the museum to realize its strategic goals. The city made an offer on the property contingent on council approval, so that's kind of where we're at. And, and we have, at the same time, we also, shortly thereafter, we started doing our due diligence process, so we wanted to make sure that there weren't anything in, in the building that, that surprises. I kind of reported at previous council meeting kind of where we were at on that. We didn't find out anything significantly new that would add information to that. But the one thing that we did find is, in unforeseen conditions, is some asbestos in the mat stick, which is holding the carpet down. And there's a fair amount of carpet in that facility. So, you know, they talk about asbestos being friable or not- So, you know, they talk about asbestos being friable or non-friable. Friable just means if you kind of scratch it, it's gonna get in the air and get in your lungs. If it's non-friable, it's attached to like mastic, which is glue, so it's just not gonna move anywhere unless you're scraping it or chipping at it with something. So it's safe, but I think that, you know, we probably would want to remove that carpet and put down the surface, it's probably more appropriate for a museum-type purposes. And estimates to pull that up is somewhere between $16,000 and $25,000. I honestly, when I kind of put together a rough performer very early on in this, I had a lot more money in that from unexpected conditions that we might find. It's an older building, you never know what you're gonna find, so I think we're well within, actually, we're under what I would have expected to find when we entered our due diligence process. So I'm gonna have Gloria talk here in a minute, but the cost of the property is $425,000. We will have additional costs to purchase and renovate the property, to make it fully ADA compliant, some of those costs could be spread out of time. There'll be a cost to move equipment and artifacts from the current location, and it could raise the price to as much as $650,000, and that's kind of what we're asking for. Efforts have been ongoing to identify as ways to defray the overall costs. If council approves moving forward with this building purchase, the current Heritage Museum building will be put up for sale. However, it's hard to say at this time, you know, what that value of that property is. It does have value, it's just, it's hard to calculate that. We will seek grants and assistance from the Heritage Museum Society. I know that they're excited to support this effort, and they have supported this effort significantly from the start, and they will help to defray some of the costs. We will also be looking for Oregon Main Street grants and Oregon Heritage grants that would further defray some of the costs. Some of those grants are a little bit out of cyclone, so they might be for some of the tenant improvements down the road, or some of the things that we can't take off with the first part. So I was gonna have Gloria kind of talk about, you know, the process to get the money in place so that we could actually close on those deals.
Good evening. So as far as the financing, right now where we're at is, we expect to have a resolution to you at your next meeting on the 22nd. That's the standard resolution, most of you have seen them before. It'll be very similar to the one that we did this last spring. Right now, the, our financial advisor from Piper Jaffrey is working on a bid, he's doing out, sending out proposals, and we're looking at doing a bank financing instead of going to the public market, just because this is a really a smaller dollar amount financing, so the banks are more apt to give us a better rate. You may have heard that our, the feds have lowered the interest rate again. So in May, we got that, for the water rights, we got that loan for 2.9%. I would expect, now speculating a little bit, but I would expect to see maybe right around 2.5, and with some competitive proposals. So that is, that's very good. We'll go for $650,000, I think is what we said, to cover all of the costs, and so we will, we will design the amortization on the loan in order to provide the ability to pay it off earlier. However, we're not going, we're going to extend it a little bit more, so that, we'll do a 10-year loan and design it that way, but wait for the payback, for an early payback a little further out, because we know that it'll probably take longer to sell the current museum, and that will get us a better rate, too. Is there anything else on that? We will, we're working on a calendar with our financial advisor and our bond counsel, and I expect to have a calendar for you for the whole financing and everything when we bring the resolution on the 22nd.
Can I ask a question before Gloria gets too far away? As finance officer for the City of Independence, do you feel comfortable with this move?
I do. I, and it has a lot to do with our history and being able to receive grants. We've got a fantastic grant writer, and we've been very successful in achieving grant awards to help offset some of the costs, so. And financially, we are in a very good place. I still, you know, I'm always cautious to be conservative, we don't want to do anything big and fancy, but, and we've got a lot of projects out there that we're working on. But yes, this is, I think this is economically a good project.
Thank you.
So, and I'll kind of add to that in kind of my closing remarks here. You know, this is a good price for a property in Old Town. Obviously, if everything just went sideways, we still would have an asset that we can turn around and sell, and even some of the capital improvements that we would be making in this would be a benefit to that as well. So it makes a lot of sense, it also makes a lot of sense financially, because we're gonna be investing some significant money in that existing structure if we stay there and try to continue to operate a museum anyway. And those monies aren't gonna be nearly as well spent. You will not have hardly any return on that money if at some point in time we did try to turn around and sell that building. And so I think it makes sense for a lot of reasons, I think we're at a good time to be purchasing something that's closer to downtown, it will have a lot of value and a lot of benefits, as we've already talked about, as well as it gets us out of the building that is probably better suited for a different use at this point in time. So, you know, I guess, you know, the bottom line is, from my perspective, I don't think we're gonna get a better option than this, not financially, not for location, not for the perfect size, not for everything else. And so I think it makes a lot of sense if we want to move forward and continue to support the museum and make it a place that is treasured in this community, so. So moving forward, this is really kind of the final action. If you guys approve this resolution or this motion that I'm gonna suggest here in a minute, I would essentially sign the final documents. We would then move into the closing process, and once we had the funds available, we would transfer the monies to the seller, the seller would then transfer the title to the city, that would all be recorded and done through normal processes, which you're probably all familiar with. So future council actions would be a resolution, hopefully at the next meeting, approving the loan for the Heritage Museum. We will have to do a supplemental budget later in the fiscal year, because we had not expected expenditure. So your options are to purchase the property for the Heritage Museum use, or to not purchase the property and notify the seller that the city removes their offer on the property. That's what's for you tonight. The recommendation is that you move forward to prepare and execute documents, purchase the Second Street property in the amount of $425,000, and transfer the deed to the City of Independence.
Questions for the manager or Ms. Gloria?
I do.
Please do.
Evidently, I'm talking a lot tonight, I apologize.
No worries.
Except in the case of an emergency, I think anytime we spend the taxpayers' dollars, we need to base that on some supporting documentation, so I appreciate you bringing up the strategic plan. I am really looking forward to the city getting firmly behind the museum and this effort, and that's a departure from the past. I've yet to see a video produced by the city that highlights the museum. And we've got some great grant writers on the staff, you're absolutely correct, Mr. Irvine, Mr. Cotton McGrady, getting huge sums of money, have done some great things in the city. The Heritage Museum Society doesn't have that kind of experience. So I think the staff, this is gonna have to be a team effort, the staff is gonna have to get behind this, and not only support the museum society, but support the city's museum staff, if they're gonna be successful.
Yeah, I couldn't agree more, and the reality is, is we have the right people in place to do this now, and I think this is the right location, and, you know, this is a great opportunity to really tie everything together, and, you know, I'm new here, so I get to see everything through fresh eyes, and, you know, I see this as being a special place. There's so many places in Oregon and other places that talk about their history, and they talk about, you know, their past, and, you know, it's important, but it really isn't, you know, important to defining what the community is today. The history of Independence and the way that it has grown, and what you can see even today, you know, looking at a picture of the ferry that was going across the river, well, I can see where C Street is, I can see a cross out, I can see where the fireworks were, you know, put off, and this was, you know, the foundation of the city. And there is relevance from everything that's happened in the city today, and it's important that we don't lose that, because if you lose that, we lose that thing that every community says, "Don't ever do," was when we have growth, make sure you don't lose our community values. And so I think this is one important component to that, and yeah, it will absolutely 100% have my support, and everybody else's, and I do agree with, this needs to be a team effort. Carly's gonna have her hands really full tomorrow. If you guys approve this, because we're gonna set her loose to kind of do some visioning and figuring this out, but it's not gonna go on her shoulders. The reality is, is capital projects and those kind of things are not something I'm expecting her to do. I don't expect her to be figuring out the tenant improvements, but participating in a process for us to move that forward. So there'll be public works involved, there'll be planning involved, there'll be building department involved, there will be a lot of people involved, not just to make this happen, but to set it up for the future of what this is going to be.
Because having worked at the museum, the city has not always been there. The city's not always answered the call when we need a light bulb changed, for instance. So it really needs to be a concerted effort. And the community needs to understand, we've lost the offset that we were hoping for with the Polk Street property. So that puts the onus really on, on the city to raise money and to find some kind of grant opportunities that result in big numbers.
Yeah.
So I'm gonna hold you to your word.
Please.
Yes, I just wanted to say that I think we have the perfect combination right now. We have the right location, we have the right motive, we have the right attachment to our historic nature, our intrinsic historic nature, and we have the right museum director. And I like the fact that this property is in downtown, but not on Main Street, so it's not competing for retail space, but it's so convenient to the downtown. It's still going to be very close to the elementary school downtown. I just, I couldn't picture it being a better situation, and I'm already framing ideas for how to raise money for that carpet.
Additional questions or comments for staff?
I just had a question about some of the types of grants we'd be applying for. Can they be used to pay, you know, make loan payments?
You know, probably not. Typically, the grants don't like that, and so I, that's kind of why, when I said it, I said, you know, probably future tenant improvements are things that we wanted to stage in. We're gonna have to figure out the finances of this and what we want to do. You know, I think we, $650,000, we have, you know, a reasonable budget, but it's not gonna be everything, that's gonna need to make this a complete facility for a long time. And as for fundraising efforts, grants are gonna come in and other things. The primary, you know, offset is gonna be the sale of the existing building that we have. There is, you know, a significant value there, and we'll make sure when we put the loan package together, this is what I should have reminded Gloria to say before, is we'll make sure that that loan has no penalties if we want to pay down on a certain portion of that debt early, which is our intention, so.
The Lega City newsletter this morning had a museum grant opportunity in it.
Yeah.
But I would also add that I think if we're at all serious about saving the museum, this is the best option we've got.
Other comments?
I'm gonna weigh in. You know, knowing what it would take to do what needs to be done at the current facility, I think there is few choice, this is a good choice, because to do anything else at the current facility would be, I never knew how much elevators were, or let, just, don't even start. And so to accomplish anything, and I was just thinking, that we have some wonderful veterans' displays in the museum, and I was struck that there are some veterans in our area that can't go see the, it's extremely difficult for them to go see the display, and that, that in itself struck me as something. So I'm glad we're doing this, and if there are no more questions and or comments, this is an action item. Ms. Corr, would you like to make the motion?
Sure, I move that the city manager prepare and execute documents to purchase and transfer the deed on 281 Second Street in the amount of $425,000 to the City of Independence.
Check that. Take a second, Karen.
Take a second, Kathy.
There you go. Is there any other comments that need to be made? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed?
No.
Motion carries. Thank you very much. Is there anything else? We have comments, council announcements.
I have no announcements, but boy, do I have a comment. I want to thank everyone who participated in any fashion in the ghost walk. We had a phenomenal crowd, a record this year of over 2,000 people coming downtown, and every report I've heard from the volunteers is that they absolutely had a blast.
And I'd like to give Amy Christiansen a nod, who created the new paranormal exhibit at the museum, which I thought was a great segue into the ghost tour this year.
Additional comments? If not, ladies and gentlemen, somebody say adjourn?
Adjourn.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Let's go home.